We all love you. At least in the city limits.
That's right.
I gotta do my hair.
I know that one.
Yeah, it's gray now, but it's just gonna start to fall. Yeah, we don't want that.
Don't even store.
All of them is good. I can't.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
I haven't had your recording started?
Yes, Dad.
Okay, well, welcome and welcome back, everybody, to City of Bonnie Lake City Council meeting. This is the first meeting of the year, January 9th, 2024. The first thing we always do is salute our flag. So if you're ready to stand with.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Court, your phone roll, please.
Mayor McCullough?
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter?
I think this screen didn't see you there.
Yeah, he was, I see.
Yeah, we're not reached here. It's technical, but he's focusing. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton?
Here.
Councilmember Heaton?
Here.
Councilmember McCallmans? Councilmember Roach?
Here.
Councilmember Swatman?
Present.
And have you heard anything from Councilmember McCallmans?
I haven't either.
What feeling?
Either, because he's here six, right? It is six. He's famous for running.
Oh, yeah, Kelly is running. They should be there in a couple of minutes. He's right here.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, there he is.
Well, we tried to wait, Councilmember McCallmans. Where are we at?
Okay, there's Terry.
Okay, and we have Deputy Mayor Carter back as well.
I'm getting Terry from my ear.
Getting so quiet.
Yes, we did.
I'm here. I missed something, I think.
Oh, I was just asking if you could hear so we could proceed. Given what we have next on agenda.
Yes, I can hear you now. Thank you.
All right, so we have no agenda modifications tonight, but we do have two appointments. Madam Court, item one.
This is AB 2401, motion M 2401. The council motion would be to elect a deputy mayor and assign council members to the council standing committees.
Okay, do we have any nominations for Deputy Mayor?
I nominate Terry Carter. Deputy Carter. Deputy Mayor Terry Carter.
Do we have any further nominations? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of Councilman, well, Deputy Mayor Terry Carter for Deputy Mayor for an additional term. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You're in and opposed. Congratulations, Deputy Mayor Carter. You haven't had a term working with me. I don't know if that's good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and everyone.
All right, next we have the assignment of council standing committees. And this, and Deputy Mayor, are you in a position where you can, you can direct this part of me?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So I think I've talked to everybody and we can assign the positions. So CDC would be Councilmember Swatman, Councilmember McCallmans, and Councilmember Fullerton. Public Safety would be Councilmember Baldwin, Councilmember Roach, and Councilmember Hubler. And then Finance would be essentially, once those positions have determined who their chair is gonna be or who their representative will be for Finance, then those will be assigned at that time.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Carter. Now, do we have a motion to accept the position of the council standing?
Salute.
Any second? All right, so. And Madam Court, do we have to vote that in or simply the motion? Okay, just wanted to make sure. And so now we have our second Madam. Aye, Madam Court?
This is AB 2405, motion M 2405. The council motion would be to appoint a city's representative to the Pierce County Regional Council.
Okay, do we have any volunteers? And not one of these where we step back in.
So I have a question. Can the staff go over what that is, what it entails?
Yes.
Time commitments. Issues, if you will.
I can. I was the alternate. Councilmember Evans was on, was the chair for that. So essentially, you meet once a month on, I believe it's the third Thursday, at 6 o'clock, and you can do Zoom or you can go in person when they have meetings in person. It is with the Pierce County, it's the Pierce County Regional Council. So there's at least one representative from every city, and they go over issues with Pierce County. And I don't like, they'll, they'll discuss matters that are coming up as far as dealing with Pierce County Council, essentially, things, anything that's regional that is coming down the pipe from the state legislature that we might have to deal with as a region and then come back to as a city.
Okay, so all cities have a represent?
Yes.
And I have a question. Is it restricted to actual council members or can anybody outside of council volunteer, sir? Okay, Ms. Solt.
So it is, it just has to be elected member of the City of Bonnie Lake. I don't think there's anything in the Pierce County Regional Council bylaws that limit it to a council member. I do know there's some mayors that serve on it. In addition to the things that Councilmember Fullerton discussed, it also selects the people who serve on the Zoo Track Board, because that's part of it. It also reflects the representative that goes into Puget Sound Regional Council, because there are cities and towns, staff members that sit up at the Puget Sound Regional Council level that are selected by the Pierce County Regional Council. So for example, there's two sub-staff committees, TCC, which is the Transportation Coordinating Committee, that makes recommendations on transportation items to PCRC, and then the Growth Management Coordinating Committee, which is all the planning directors that make recommendations on regional planning items at the county level. And we also have staff members that go up. So I'm on the regional staff committee at PSRC. And that body has elected officials that also go sit up at, can be elected to go sit up at the PSRC as part of the regional staff. The Regional Growth Management Policy Board and Executive Board, how they structure themselves up there. And I believe Councilmember Evans was on the Growth Management Policy Board about 10 years ago, for a couple of years. So kind of, you can be, I guess, as involved as you want. But yes, there's one member from every city. I think some of the bigger cities like Tacoma have two representatives, and county has a couple. But yes, primarily one representative from each city.
Councilmember Baldwin?
So it sounds like what you're telling us is much of what is happening with those councils have to do with some hot cut issues. Is that what you're saying?
I would say yes. The two biggest things that come through the Pierce County Regional Council are a lot of things that go with compliance of plans and stuff like that. The other is transportation funding. They vote on the packages that get sent up for both regional and local competitions for transportation funding.
And they also have given notice whenever there are grants coming down that the cities can apply for as well. The transportation, the water sewer, different grants that we can get.
Okay, well, all of which I would not mind being a little bit more directly involved in. So I am interested in volunteering. However, I don't want to put the kibosh on anybody else who might want to volunteer as well. And so if anybody decides myself wishes to volunteer, or please, let me know.
Are you interested, Dan?
So I was gonna say, I would be interested, but I would need to have probably good backup as well. It is every, well, it's only once a month on Thursday, but scheduling may be a problem at times. So that's kind of where I am, but I'd be going to get a backup.
As an alternate, I always sat in regardless. I could not do any voting or anything, but I always sat in. And I was, so I was pretty much there even if Justin wasn't able to be there. But I don't think that's something that I'm interested in this time.
Okay.
And then I always met with Councilmember Evans either through phone or email prior to the meetings if there was any issues that he wanted to talk about or if he wanted me at the meeting, just to provide staff support to whoever from the city is on the committee. Because a lot of the things that come through, PCRC have come through the Growth Management Committee or TCC, and we have a pretty good familiarity. So I always agreed to, if I needed to be there or if I had to be available by email the nights of the meeting if he needed any information. So I'm also there as a staff resource for whoever's serving on that committee.
Well, this is one of those canceled. Yes, Councilmember Baldwin.
Where is the in-person location, though? If it's not on Zoom, where's the actual? They have moved around. I was never able to attend in person because for the last two years, they really weren't. There was only like two or three months where they started meeting in person. One time, they were talking about meeting at the Sumner Courthouse, their council meeting room, but.
They're having problems finding space because they've called us before.
They're having trouble finding space.
Nobody wants them?
No, they're, it's just a big, they need a big area.
Oh, okay.
Historically, they have met at the Pierce County Annex out in Tacoma, and that may be having issues. But that's prior to COVID where we always met, was out at the Pierce County Annex behind the Costco over there where the planning building was situated. So I don't know if that's what they might go back to, but that was historically, and there may be problems now with that space, but that's where they had met.
Oh, let's take Councilmember McCallmans. So if council members need to take time to look at where it's at and need more information, you have to decide this time?
No, because they can do, I mean, yes, because they can, they're gonna meet like, I don't, I think it's this week or next week.
I have the same thing. Four hours later, I have this on.
And I would be willing to be a backup if Dan wants to do it too. Being on the Planning Commission, it does help me to know a little bit more of the backside of it.
Plan a little better?
Yeah.
Okay, well, do we have an official volunteer?
All volunteer.
Okay, so Councilmember Roach. And then as the alternate, do we, do we have volunteer for the alternate? Councilmember Hubler? So we have our, oh, and let's vote on all in favor of Councilmember Roach as the city's representative for Pierce County Regional Council. Say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, Councilmember Hubler as the city's alternate representative for Pierce County Regional Council. Say aye.
Aye.
So Councilmember Roach is our representative for the Pierce County Regional Council, and Councilmember Hubler is all, is our alternative. Do we have motion to accept? Okay, and, okay, so we have accepted.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
If I could interrupt for just a moment, I'm getting information that there's four or five other people in the Blue Jeans lobby, not realizing that this is on Teams now. So I don't know what we need to do to make sure that they can hopefully get access. I just wanted to make that aware.
Do we have a way to do that considering we're an open meeting?
Yeah, you have to send the links for this meeting.
Yeah, they have to look at their agenda.
It's on the city website, isn't it?
Yeah, it's on the city website. It's on the newsletter that we sent out. I don't think I can tell them in Blue Jeans. I'll try, but I don't think I can get ahold of them in Blue Jeans because we're not using it anymore.
I believe that's really the only way that we can do it is no way to directly send.
This is recorded, though, right?
Yes.
So they can review the recording?
That is true. All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor Carter. So seeing that there is no volunteer, I mean, go on Citizen Commentary. All right, this is your time to address the council on city business. The city will now enable video and microphone for those who are attending virtually. You will need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you're wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and move to the virtual comments afterwards. Anybody who is here in person, and this applies to the people who are virtual as well. You will have five minutes, and please state your name and address for the record. Go forward.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Erin Muskie. Address is right across the parking lot at the library. I'm the senior librarian of the Bonnie Lake Library. I'm just here tonight to give some updates on what's going on with the library. The first one is about the food lockers that we are so thrilled to be hosting in partnership with the city at Good Roots Northwest. We are anticipating delivery of the lockers next week if the weather does not screw up those plants, which we will keep our fingers crossed. We hope to have them up and running very soon, and we're working with the team at Good Roots for a little occasion to mark the introduction of that service to the community. So I'll have more information on that, hopefully, in the next meeting that I attend. I also wanted to invite everyone who is here tonight to come across to the library and make a Valentine or a veteran. We are running a program along with the Sumner and the Buckley Libraries. From now until the 26th of January, each location has a card making table up in the library. You'll be able to use the supplies we provided to make a Valentine's Day card. And at the end of that timeframe, we're gonna be delivering them to three different locations in the area. The Washington Soldiers Home in Ordin, the Ordin Veterans Village, which is a tiny home village for veterans who were previously homeless, and also American Legion Post 67 in Puyallup. So at the end of January, we'll be gathering up all the cards, and we'll be delivering them to those locations so they can get them out to the veterans they serve in time for Valentine's Day. Really excited about that. We have at our location, this is the second day we've been making cards, and we have about 40 so far. The last thing I wanted to share is just a, did you know? Did you know that the library has a kindness club for children? This club meets periodically, and they work on different projects that benefit the community. So our next meeting of the kindness club, if anyone has children or grandchildren who might want to get involved, is Saturday, the 20th. They'll be meeting in the afternoon, and they are making wellness kits because it is cold and flu season, that they are going to be putting together hand sanitizer, little packs of tissues, tea, and some Get Lung notes. And they will be distributing those to the senior center here in Bonnie Lake and also the folks out at the market. And that is my update. Thank you for your time tonight.
All right, thank you, Ms. Muskie. One question, what is the age range on the, for children?
Oh, the kindness club is really geared towards children who are in elementary school.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have anybody else who could give the order?
Hello, Mayor McCullough and council members. My name's Dave Morrell. I'm Pierce County Council District One Representative. And I just wanted to come and welcome the new members. And I think it's gonna be a great collaborative involvement between the Pierce County Council and the City Council. Obviously, some of you know Bonnie Lake is the biggest city in District One. And so I appreciate any of the work. I know working with John's been great, great communicator. But I'm actually thrilled that Councilmember Roach has entered the fray again in politics and look forward to working with you, especially at the Puget Sound Regional Council. As you know, it's really an important organization so that way we, East Pierce County doesn't continue to get railroaded by stacked votes from other cities.
Oh, that doesn't happen.
Yeah, so it's real important that we get our projects graded and rated and approved, as well as ones on the west side of Pierce County that seems to get all the funding. So with that, I'm just there again. Congratulations to you that are returning. And there again, I look forward to working with all of you. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Morrell. Do we have anybody else who could give the order?
Councilmember Dan Deckerpass, council member of the Poolland Seventy Streets, Monterey, Washington, speaking on Bill Rights, the First Amendment, freedom of speech. The First Amendment states that Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech. As such, in the Constitution, only Congress can make laws concerning the Constitution. It goes beyond just that. There is a ratification period that could take up to seven years or even longer to complete the concerning Constitution amendment. In creating a constitutional amendment or modifying an amendment, it takes three-fourths of the House to approve it, and it takes three-fourths of the state to approve a new amendment and/or modifying an amendment. Council, be aware, you are the Congress of the City of Bonnie Lake. You make the laws of the city. The federal constitution states, excuse me, federal constitution cannot be modified, and RCW can be as long as the laws, laws greater than what the RCW states. Example of that is, the City of Tacoma, they have modified RCW. They're saying that you're not allowed to make a U-turn anywhere in the state, but the RCW states that only if you can't see 500 feet beyond before you make the, in front of you or behind you before you make the U-turn. The Tacoma has exceeded it, saying that no U-turns at all anywhere in the city at any time. Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech. What does the freedom of speech do? It protects us as citizens of the United States from them, the dictators, kings, tyrants, and police state corruption. The First Amendment has limitations. It does not protect us from our employer. It is only protecting us from government action. It would be very difficult for any person to stop a citizen from speaking at a council meeting in rate public comment as of right now. If a police officer pulled a person over and this person would not stop talking or making comment, the police officer could not stop the person from speaking. The police officer has no law, there's no law in the state that says that I cannot speak even if the law officer says, shut up, be quiet, please don't speak however he wants to say it. You can look at him and laugh and say, quack, 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 or whatever you want to say to the person. It cannot stop you. It's disappointing, but there it is. The First Amendment is very slippery and dangerous for any government elected official or employee to tamper with. There is protection from any person interfering with rights belonging to the people as stipulated in the First Amendment. Amendments, amendments to cause a torrent of action to occur. These amendments do, the First Amendment does merely by congressional state process and by the inevitable rights given by our Lord God as stipulated in our Constitution. Council, you make all laws for the city. Be it adopted such as RCWs, you also create ordinances and create tax structures. You determine how much to charge the people for convenience such as water bill, you know, the water bill, such a convenience, road repair, sewer repair, and necessary repairs to continue a good operation of the city. You can also take ordinances that we have now, vote them out, amend them, and/or create new ordinances. You are the Congress of the City of Bonnie Lake. And it's very important that you understand that you can, whenever you feel like it, when it's in the best interest of the city, to change ordinances, create new ordinances, or do whatever is necessary in the laws of the city to protect the city and its constituents, us the people. I wanted to say one thing, if I may. The new faces on the council. Congratulations for your win, Ms. Hubler. Council, she's a big council member, and Councilmember Dan Roach. Very happy to see you, Councilmember Roach. Very pleased. And I'm happy to see that the other council members that also came, voted, were voted in. Thank you very much for coming forward and being part of the council. Thank you, guys. And I know that for looking at what we have for council this year, the next two years are gonna be a fun adventure. And I know that things are gonna be a lot better than they were in the past. Again, thank you, council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Decker. It was good seeing you again. Okay, looks like, so is there anybody else who's present who could give the order? Okay, we will move to those who are virtual. Anybody who is virtual and wishes to step up to make Citizen Commentary. You have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. All right, looks like we have nobody virtual, so the city will now disable all video and microphones for those who are attending virtually. And we do have one correspondent, Madam Court.
His deputy clerk's office received an email that was shared prior to the meeting with the mayor and the council from Miss Doff from regarding fireworks.
All right. Thank you, Madam Court. And now we'll move on to council committee reports. Finance committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met upstairs today at 5:00. We approved our minutes. We had a department report on personnel. We have a police officer starting March 1st. Probably won't start the academy until May or June. And we're sad to see Mr. Johnstone leaving on January 30th. The other, the rest of the packet or whatnot's been sent out to everybody. That's kind of the main highlights. Discussion and action items. We talked about AB 2403, the nonrepresented employees longevity leave. This would be on our thing tonight with the Afsmi contract. If that is approved, then this other one for the nonrepresented employees would also be coming forward on January 23rd to be looked at for approval. And then we talked about AB 2407, an MOU with Rainier Recovery Centers. This is for the court. This is a one-person crisis responder slash peer support type person that can provide counseling and assistance with those in crisis. And this is being paid for with the grant that was already approved last year. That would also be coming forward on the January 23rd consent agenda. We didn't have any open discussion, and our next meeting will be Tuesday, January 23rd at 5:00 p.m. upstairs. And we adjourn. Thank you. We adjourn, thank you.
Using or not using or minimizing or what we have to do, what we were required to do in that area. Again, future council will give more information on that. I think the strategy was, uh, that we were gonna actually do some fluoride testing as the year goes by to see actually what the real exposure is to the Tacoma water, which contains fluoride or is it not currently? And that was our items. And a special note, thanks to Ryan Johnson for all your service. You know, it's been really a pleasure to work with you, um, over the years. I will definitely miss you up here. We're not too far away. I don't understand the commute issue, but whatever, so, okay. Have fun down there, right?
Yeah, thank you. All right, thank you, Councilmember Clones. Uh, which brings up a, say a point Deputy Mayor. Do we have a prospective ETA on when workshops coming? For the SOR agreement? Well, I heard that they might bring that at, at, at future workshops, so when, oh, yeah. Next Tuesday, yeah. Next Tuesday? All right, good, thank you. Um, all right, uh, let's move on to public safety committee. Since we don't have, uh,
Public safety did not. The speech is gone. We deleted it.
All right, let's just put on the record that, that we have to elect a new chairman for the, uh, public safety committee. And we will look forward to hearing them at the next meeting. Um, all right, don't see any other reports, so now we have the consent agenda or your motion.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I move that, we remove AB 2404 and move that to the general?
Okay, um, do we have a motion on the table or do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, with the, uh, motion on the table, all in favor of moving motion M 2404 from the consent agenda to a full council, um, discussion, correct? Uh, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Also for clarification for our new members, because I don't know what the policies currently are on the, uh, removal of consent agenda items. I believe that any single council member has the right to do that, right?
I believe so, right? Uh, but I do want to check with our parliament chair. And, um, as far as we have, uh, can a single council member move to, uh,
Wanted to make sure that our leaders were, you know, if they were unsure about items, I think they can just move it and, you know, it just goes on to the regular agenda. You know, we want to prevent disruption of the country. Doesn't, doesn't mean anything, but it just means.
So any member can, any member can ask, um, but it has to be voted, voted on at the meeting. I don't know if you have any local rules that allow them to remove it. Some councils have a, if you could remove it just by request by noon the day of, I don't know if you have that.
We ask, we ask that you let us know Thursday or Friday versus the night of.
But we can sell them. But you could always remove it at the meeting and it's a motion with a second kind of motion.
Absolutely, and so just vote all in favor of, um, moving, um, AB 2404 or motion M 2404 from the consent agenda to the full agenda. Say aye.
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 Uh, all opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we have, um, I believe that it's six to one. So AB 2404, it's item D on the agenda, is now moved to the full council issues. And now do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended? Any seconds?
Second.
All right, so all in favor of, um, adopting the consent agenda that has been amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that's been voted in unanimously. And let's see, we have, uh, no committee, um, issues, but now we need to move to the full council issues to, um, discuss, um, uh, the motion that was just meant from the, um, from the consent agenda. Now, Matt Clark?
This is AB 24, national court motion, M 24, national court. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a waiver agreement with acting local 120, representing public works and general government employees from January 1st of 2024 through December 31st, 2025.
Do you want your motion?
So, Liz?
Okay, um, do we have any discussion on that? Councilmember Clones.
Um, so this is good work and because it's, uh, a significant contract that obligates the city, I'm always uncomfortable having that sort of a topic on the consent agenda. I, I think it's healthy to, uh, have a, a moment just so that the people listen to the, uh, transcript, understand that these, these sort of items have been considered by the council and to recognize the good and hard work that, uh, Mr. Sam and his team have done to get us here. So I, I'm going to support this. I just, I struggle with significant items like this being on the consent agenda.
I see. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Clones. Do we have any further discussion on that or do we move to a vote?
I just had a question. Yes, Councilmember Roach. So I, and I think there's a lot of good work done that too. But my question was just, in general, do we do, this is a two-year contract. Do we generally look for two-year contracts or the three years? I know different governments do it different ways and sometimes there's like a year long and.
Yeah, it's typically the strike of three-year contracts. And this is a three-year contract, 2024 through 2026.
Oh, it says 25 on here.
Oh, yes, it does.
Oh, so it is 26 then?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we're ready to move to a vote.
Okay, all in favor of, uh, adopting a motion M 2404, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion M 2404 has been adopted unanimously and we have no committee issues, so seeing no more business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. It's good seeing everybody again.